All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, May 19th, Public Meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody and hope everybody is doing well out there. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Knoll, are there any additions or corrections to the public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Agenda is approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes ahead of the meeting? Are any additions, corrections, questions, or concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve minutes?
Make a motion to approve minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, minutes approved by mutual consent. The first action item on the agenda this evening is a request for property tax abatement for the accident community housing. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. This is a annual exemption for the accident community housing corporation. This is done under the annotated code of Maryland Property Tax Code 7-205 for a consideration of payment in lieu of our property taxes.
Are there any questions or comments or concerns on the request? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the request for the property tax abatement for the accident community housing.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
All right, we have a motion to accept, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, question or motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. This will be a hearing that we will receive comments up until June 1st at GC comments at GarrettCounty.org. The place that we typically receive comments, once again, GC comments at GarrettCounty.org. If you have questions or comments on the constant yield tax rate, before we do that and I turn it over to Scott Weeks, our Finance Director, I do need a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
All right, the public meeting is now closed and the public hearing is now open on the constant yield tax rate. Scott Weeks?
Yes, thank you. For the tax year beginning July 1, 2020, the estimated real property assessable base will increase by 0.8% from $4,286,554,091 to $4,319,679,541. If Garrett County maintains the current rate of 1.056 cents per $100 of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by 0.8%, resulting in $349,804 of new real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of increasing assessments, the real property tax rate should be reduced to $1.0479, the constant yield tax rate. The county is considering not reducing its real property tax rate enough to fully offset increasing assessments. The county proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of $1.056 cents per $100 of assessment. This tax rate is 0.8% higher than the constant yield tax rate and will generate $349,804 in additional property tax revenue. In addition to that, I just want to point out, we do have a tax differential agreement set up with the town of Mountain Lake Park, so they get a discount of 0.65 cents. That would bring their proposed rate to .9909 cents. Their constant yield tax rate is .9786 cents. So by bringing it to .9909 cents, that's a 1.3% increase or $13,380. So combining both the county and the Mountain Lake Park tax rates for Garrett County, we would be projecting about $363,184 of new revenue. So we advertised this in the Republic on May 7th and public comment has been open since that time. And as you've pointed out Chairman, that we will continue to keep this open till June 1st when we adopt our budget and we will adopt the tax rate on June 1st at the same time. But I want to turn it over to Mr. Knoll right now to see if any public comments have been presented.
Yes, sir. As of the start of the meeting at 4 o'clock today, we have received no comments on this topic.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Weeks or Mr. Knoll, or comments in general? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting.
Motion to close the public hearing and reopen our meeting.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We are now back in the public meeting and at this time, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Weeks for the presentation of the preliminary budget overview for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, thanks again. Can you see the PowerPoint presentation on your screen?
Not yet.
I cannot. Not yet. How about now? There you go.
Yep.
Coming up.
Okay. I want to start off with giving you a brief overview of the revenue. First, let me start off by saying that we had requests of 3.5 million over our projected revenue. So we were able to trim about 3.5 million out of this budget to get to a balanced budget. Um, one second. Okay, we're proposing a budget of 82 million. You'll see down here, 82,617,295. And when you compare that to fiscal year 20's budget of 83,233,703, we're actually going in with a reduced budget of $617,408 or a reduction of .74%. As you can see on this line item, we are not proposing to use any reserves to balance this budget. But what I want to do is I want to focus on this third column, this change column, and get into a little more detail of these different functions or buckets that we place things in. So in doing so, I take you to the next slide. And this is a slide that I like to focus on. This is what we call the big 11 revenue categories. There are 11 biggest revenue generators for the county. I normally use anything that's 900,000 or over, but this year I'm going to use 750 because of this reduction in the mission amusement tax down to 750,000. So let's start off on each line item and I'll try to explain some of these variances. As we mentioned in the constant yield tax rate hearing, the constant yield tax rate is $1.0479. We're proposing a tax rate of $1.056, which is our current rate. So there is not an increase in the rate. That would generate about $363,000 of revenue. And that includes the town of Mountain Lake Parks tax differential. In addition to this, we are going, we are proposing to increase our interest rate on past due tax bills from 1% to 1.5%. As you know, we got legislative approval to do that this past session. We're projecting that that additional .50% will increase or generate an additional $250,000 of revenue. So that brings us up over 600,000. Also included in this is any new construction. The local State Department of Assessment and Taxation Office, they give us conservative estimates of properties that are in the pipeline that they anticipate picking up during this fiscal year. So all these components combined here will help make up this million dollar increase in property tax revenue. Moving down to the next line item, I want to focus on this for a second. Income tax, we're actually projecting a $550,000 increase in that line item. Now that looks a little strange with everything that's going on right now in the world with COVID-19. And you've actually heard me say that we're going to lose some money on income tax. Well, that's what we would normally anticipate receiving. As you know, in fiscal year 2019, we finished the year at just over $14 million. So that's really our baseline going into this year. And then, and then 18, we finished at 12 and a half million dollars. We were actually projecting another record year for income tax revenue. It was trending upward until this pandemic occurred. So what we've done at this point, we're using some state assumptions. Each month we're closed, we are taking a reduction about 22% in payroll dollars. We just don't have a good data at this point in time to see what the impact of the virus is going to be. Personally, there's a side of me that thinks that we'll be okay because most of those out of work are probably the lower wage earners that could actually be making more money on unemployment right now, which unemployment's a taxable income. So that's one side, but I'm not, I'm not able to, I'm not comfortable, I should say, with risk in the farm. So I've taken some trend data. I've applied a 22% decrease or decline in income tax for the months of July, August, and September. And as you know, these are huge months for our local economy at Deep Creek Lake. So that's, that's the assumption I'm building in and that's what a lot of finance directors across the state are doing. And that's some guidance that the state has given us at this time. And that's what they're using. Moving on to personal property, windmills tax, we'll see a decline of $303,968. And as we're all aware, that's a declining revenue base for the depreciation of the wind turbines over 30 years. That'll continue to decline until it caps out at 25% of the, of the total value. Moving along to the next category, public utility tax, we're seeing a slight increase of 192,326. Again, we get those assessable bases from the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. They give us the figure to build the tax off of. That rate is two, two and a half times our, our current rate or 2.64 per every hundred dollars of assessment. So I want you to focus on this accommodations tax, several of these categories, accommodations tax, recordation tax, transfer tax, and emission amusement tax. I'm going to tell you what my assumptions I built on those because the assumptions are all the same for all four. For accommodations, we're projecting a $650,000 loss compared to, or I should say a decrease compared to that of fiscal year 20. Recordation and transfer, we're reducing those down by 200,000 compared to fiscal year 2020. And emission amusement, we're reducing it down by 150 from 2020. How I arrived at those figures is what we did, we took trend data for the months of July, August, and September. Those are some of the busiest months that generate all these revenue line items, some of the highest months of the year with Deep Creek Lake. And what I did was I took that trend data for the past three years, averaged it out, and then took half of that revenue stream for those months. Again, there's a lot of debate whether that's the right way or wrong way, but it's just too much uncertainty right now. We don't know if, how quickly everything will rebound and how, how quickly things will get back to what we call normal. So that leaves a couple line items here, disparity grant, forestry and parks, which is our pilot bill, payment in lieu of taxes on, on DNR properties within the state and highway user. Those figures actually, all three come from the state. They, they give me those figures. Disparity grant is actually higher, but it is capped at 2.5 million. That was capped a few years back by the legislators. So in this big 11 categories, we are projecting an additional 391,349 or a .51% increase. But as I stated earlier, we're still projecting an overall decrease of 600,000. This next slide is just a graphical representation of our revenue stream. As we know, the majority of our revenue comes from taxes. Here's a breakdown of those taxes that I just went through. The majority of those, 88% of our revenue stream comes from property or taxes in general. The next 8% comes from the state government. And in this 8% are things like our disparity grant that I just mentioned, our pilot bill money that I just mentioned, highway user and police protection grant makes up the majority of that 8%. These two categories combined make up 96% of the budget or the majority of the budget. Moving along to the expense side, again, we're going to focus mainly on this column here to show you how we balance the budget. Because we had to build in about 2.2 million of revenue losses due to COVID-19, we had to adjust the expenses accordingly. The roads department will jump down to this category here. They helped to absorb the majority of this, or at least a good portion of this. Combined, we normally try to pave and tar and chip about 2.4 million dollars of roads each year. We reduce this down to 900,000 this year. We've worked with Rose Division Chief Paul Harvey on this, and he felt that this would be sufficient, especially since they are already behind due to the shutdown. We put the brakes on spending when we shut down and they didn't get to the spring paving. They didn't get to complete that. And right now, I think we're back half cruise every other week. And they're just preparing roads right now. So we wouldn't even be able to pave if we wanted to. We're not ready for that. We continue to keep our eyes on the revenue stream and we're going to adjust and make decisions accordingly each month. If we end up fiscal year 20 better than our early projections, we may go back and add more to this, to paving and some of these categories to help the roads out. We just can't do that at this point. And we'll continue to watch the revenue stream each month and make decisions accordingly. As the saying goes, I just, I'd rather be safe than sorry. I just hope our safe is enough on our projections that we're making. State mandates continue to challenge us. And I'm going to go over some of those. Community health, you'll see 287,793 dollar increase. Again, a lot of that is due to mandated 2% COLAs for state employees on January 1st of 2021. In addition, there's a 6% negotiated increase for collective bargaining nurses and social workers. Unfortunately, these, these costs get passed on to us. Next, we have the Board of Ed. We're all familiar with the maintenance of effort. That's the minimum that local government has to fund the Board of Ed by law. That's increasing by 435,163. Garrett College is going to get an additional $100,000. Down here under public service, that's where the, the University of Maryland Extension Service is. Again, they have COLAs built into their budget and some promotions as well. I didn't mention up here, under general government, we have the election board, which is also, they have COLAs built in there. And these, all these costs get pushed down to us. All of you are aware that minimum wage continues to increase. It'll increase another 75 cents per hour to $11.75 on January 1, 2021. We're anticipating that this will cost us, without the snowball effect, about $15,000. So all the, all the items that I just mentioned, those five items, health department, education, Board of Education, Garrett College, Extension Service, Election Board, and minimum wage increases. I consider all those things, state mandates, that will cost us an additional $850,000 in our fixed costs for this next fiscal year 21. Those are things beyond our control. At this time, we do not have any increases built in for our own employees. We really need to ride this thing out and make sure we can weather the storm before we make decisions like that. You will see under this miscellaneous category, a big increase of 978, 978,079. I've built in a $1 million expense contingency for some added protection in case we're off on our revenue projections and to pay for some unforeseen expenses that may arise. So that's just a sort of an insurance policy for me to make sure we remain solvent during this time. I know I've, I've gotten a lot of questions in the past about this miscellaneous category. 3.6 million doesn't sound much like a miscellaneous category. What are we burying in there? What are we hiding in there? I've heard those comments in the past. Miscellaneous is just a financial statement category. It's a function. Miscellaneous doesn't fall into any of these other functions of government. The other items that are in there are transfers out to our enterprise funds that aren't self-sufficient, like the landfill, the airport, and our, our dot com. So we have transfers out to fund those enterprise funds. Some other items that are included in there are our other post-employment benefits to our retirees. That's categorized there as well. And of course, a contingency of a million dollars is in there. Moving down to capital, you'll see that we are going to fund 3.7 million dollars of capital with this budget. Last year, we are at 4.7 for a difference or a reduction of a million dollars. If you've heard me talk in the past, that figure should never be below 2.5 million. So we're still funding a sufficient amount of capital through this budget. Speaking of capital, let's get into that next. Give you a couple highlights of the capital, facilities and maintenance. There's a vehicle for 32,000 there. Roads Division equipment there, which is really made up of some street sweepers. And I think there's a single axle truck in there as well. Snowy Creek Bridge is our highest priority bridge right now, besides the Swallow Falls Bridge, I should say. We need to fund the Snowy Creek Bridge 400,000 this year. That's about a $650,000 project. Going down to public safety, I did not include these in state mandates. I probably could have. So that 850,000, you can tack on another 200,000. But these are requirements for our 911 center to keep it operational and to meet some of the state requirements. We have to fund that. That's why it's in this budget. On top of that, under public safety, we have an animal control transport unit for $9,305. The Board of Education will receive the majority of our capital funding this year. We have the Southern High School front facade for 1.6 million. That project's actually underway now. I've driven out there and seen some of the activity going on. So that's 1.6 million. In addition to that, we have the Southern, Northern High School turf fields for 455,000. So the Board of Ed will be getting over $2 million of capital funding from us this year. Garrett College will get an additional 500,000 to complete the Performing Arts Center project. And Kaiser's Ridge Water Tank, we need about $50,000 to complete that project. So that is our capital expenditure budget for this year, 3.7 million. And again, here's another graphical representation of our expense side of the budget. Education makes up the largest portion at 42%. Public Works at 18%. Public Safety at 15%. General Government at 8%. These categories alone make up about 83% of our total budget. And then if you add capital in there, another 5%, 88% in these five categories. So with that, I just want to summarize, summarize some of the highlights of this budget. Requests came in, 3.54 million over the projected revenue. 3 million of that 3.5 million of the requests were from outside agencies. So we were able to keep our own requests within county government down this year, which we sort of instructed our department heads to do that. And they were able to do that and help us out there. We're proposing a 78.9 million operating budget and a 3.7 million capital budget. This budget is 616,408 less than fiscal year 20 for a total operating and capital budget of 82.6 million. No reserves were used to balance this budget. We've increased the contingency to 1 million to offset the uncertainty of projections due to COVID-19. Again, that's our own little insurance policy and hopefully that's enough. We have state mandates that were funded in this budget of $850,000. And again, if you add the 911 center, we're, we're over a million dollars of state mandates. Increases to education operating budgets, 535,163. Increases to the Health Department, 287,793. There are no new positions in this budget. And actually, we're at a current hiring freeze. And at this time, there are no employee increases built into this budget. Real property tax will not change. It will remain at $1.056. There's no income tax increase in this budget. The rate will remain at 2.65%. There's no new general fund debt included in this budget. And we're still maintaining our 5%, our 4.0 million rainy day fund. And again, that's with a disclaimer that we, in the fiscal year 20, without a deficit, which I, I think we're close to breaking even at this point in time. So with that, I'll open up to questions from you commissioners. And again, if anybody else has any questions or comments, you can send them into GC comments at GarrettCounty.org. Or you can send, send questions to me as well if, if you want to. So with that, I'll turn that over back to you commissioners.
Hey, Mr. Weeks, if you would, I know one question that's been out in the community. Hey, Mr. Weeks, if you would, I know one question that's been out in the community. Especially as other districts discuss it. Can you touch on the CARES Act and some of the things that we're going to be using that money for in our requests?
Yeah, so the state is, actually, we've been awarded. Five million, just over five million. It's about five million sixty two thousand dollars in CARES Act money. What the state did, it's federal funding that's flowing through the state. They've already sent two point five million dollars to the health department, the local health department. The local health department would rather for the county to administer those funds. So we've drafted an MOU between. County government and the health department. They're going to transfer those funds over to us, to a minister. We had probably five days to develop a plan of how we would. Spend the five million dollars. So. We reached out to the local community, the municipalities, community action. Health Department, of course, county government. I think the, the fire departments, we, we reached out to everybody to submit. Their plan to us and we consolidated everything to submit to the state. Those expenses or that revenue can be used for expenses related to COVID nineteen. Okay, there's not a lot of guidance out there. It's a, we wish there was more specific guidance. Maybe that's forthcoming. But we do know that we cannot to offset any revenue losses. We've put a portion, carved out a portion for economic development because we know that businesses are struggling. Especially those that shut down and are trying to get open back up. And as I, I guess everybody's aware, we have an economic development grant program right now, twenty five hundred dollars for small businesses. And I think a lot of people have been applying for that. So we can use it for things like that. At this time, we cannot use it for any revenue losses, but. We are administering that and funny you should ask about that. I just got a call from the state today. They wanted, they have to get the other two point five million off their books, I guess. The governor wanted it into the county's hands. And they are wiring me the money today. I think it should show up in my bank account. So we will have two point five, health department has two point five. They'll be shifting that, those two point five million over to the county and we'll have five million dollars here soon.
Hey Scott, Scott, they're not sending that to your bank account, right? They're sending that to the county's bank.
I wish commissioner, I wish commissioner, but it'd probably go to Chairman Edwards' account before it would go to mine, so. No, so that's, that's where we stand with the CARES Act. So the next phase of this, we, we already have entities that. Have incurred costs outside agencies. So the first phase of that will. Get them reimbursed if, if they're qualifiable expenses. And again, we're working with. The health department and Bob Stevens will sign off on this first phase of money. He'll sit down with us and say, yeah, these are legitimate expenses. They qualify. And he'll sign off. We'll get people reimbursed for this first round. And then the second round will be for things that we need to do to open back up. To protect our employees and protect the citizens of Garrett County. So that's what we'll be doing with the funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Scott or Kevin? I, I would just like to say, Scott and Kevin both, excellent job. You know, my takeaway from this and we've talked before when we, we talked about. When we made the announcement of what our projected revenue loss would be for fiscal twenty. And I mean, obviously we've been able to mitigate that and we're not going into the red. We've been able to manage our expenses to offset the manager, the loss of revenue. So that, that's an excellent job on behalf of the citizens of Garrett County. And I want to acknowledge that and thank you guys. And then moving into next year, again, with the backdrop of the uncertainty of COVID nineteen. But to be able to, to balance a budget without any tax increases. Of any kind and without dipping into reserves and to actually come in with a lower. Budget amount than we had last year, I, I think it's just great work and I, I think I speak on behalf of all the citizens of Garrett County and say thank you. And commend Jim and Larry as well for, you know, the, the fiscal stewardship of the taxpayer dollars of the county. So I, I think a great job done and a tip of the cap to you guys. Okay, anything else from anyone before we move on? I do want to announce that the next public meeting will be Tuesday, June first. And Scott and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but that'll be the day that we actually adopt the budget. We will take comments at G C comments or at any of our email addresses. Through that time, if you have any questions, concerns, thoughts on the budget or anything county related. I would be remiss if I did not say tomorrow. I know the graduation exercises begin in Garrett County and. Things certainly didn't go the way that this crop of seniors thought it would. Both at collegiate level and the high school level, but the high school kids northern starts tomorrow with their graduation walks. And there'll be several days of that with the superintendent and I just want to congratulate those, those students. And, and wish them the best of luck as they move forward as I'm well. Would believe that Larry and Jim and everyone would, would join me in that sentiment. So with that, does anybody have anything else to add?
Paul, just one thing real quick. I think we've all had a number of calls. Emails, texts from people that are having problems with the unemployment claim process. I just want everybody to know that we've, we've elevated those issues to sender Edwards and delegate bites on to the governor's office and. Hopefully it's going to start getting better here in the next week or so. It's been really frustrating for people. They've spent. Like all day trying to get through, can't get through. And then they read articles in the paper where the governor, other people have said the system's working great, you know, and. It, it's not working great. A lot of people need that money to pay their bills and so hopefully. They, the state says they've made some more adjustments to the program and everything. And so hopefully people are going to have better. Percentage, better chances of getting through here over the next week or so. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.